All right, we're picking back up in our open session with our tax rate hearing. As provided by state statute and duly published, a public hearing will be held at 5:30 PM, at which time citizens may be heard on the property tax rates proposed to be set by Rolla School District 31, a political subdivision. The tax rates will be set to produce the revenues which the budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 shows to be required from the property tax. And that is our Kendra Atkinson.
Okay. So, as Mrs. Jamison just said, annually, the school district must prepare a tax levy calculation, and the tax rate forms and supporting documentation are on pages four through seventeen of your board packets. The tax rate calculation is governed by specific constitutional and statutory directives, such as a filing deadline of September 1st and having a public hearing. Additionally, our calculation has been submitted to and approved by the state auditor's office. Now, when completing the tax rate calculation worksheets, we start by entering July 1st assessed valuations, not appraised values. Appraised value is similar to market value, while assessed value is the amount that the tax rate is then applied to. So for an example, an item that is categorized as a residential property has an assessed value of nineteen percent of its appraised value. So if we look at a property valued at $150,000 multiplied by nineteen percent, we come up with $28,500 in assessed value. So moving forward and looking at our actual assessed values this year compared to last, we realized $16.3 million valuation increase, which is just under four percent over previous year.
Kendra, can you pull the microphone?
Oh. Hold it down. Good, thank you. Okay, in addition, the Westside Marketplace and the corresponding TIF are now on the books and are reflected here. The $16.3 million increase is due to three factors. The base assessed valuation increased just over $413,000. We have real estate new construction and improvements totaling 9.2 million, and an increase in personal property totaling 6.6 million. Those specific calculations are on page 10 of your packet. Now, this slide is going to provide us the calculation of base assessed valuation. That is the assessed value of the property that is in the district both this year and last, and then the corresponding percentage increase. This is an important calculation because the Hancock Amendment limits revenue growth on existing property to the lesser of three factors. The actual increase in value, in this case, 0.998 percent, the Consumer Price Index, which is currently 1.9 percent, or the statutory maximum increase of five percent. So in this case, for us this year, the .0998 percent represents the permitted revenue growth on property that is on the books, was on the books in 2018. That percent is then used to calculate the total revenue permitted in the current year, which is in turn used to calculate our tax rate ceiling, which we will get to. All of that is on, the recap of that is on page 11 of your packet for those calculations. And then we have Prop C. That is a law which passed in 1982 and provides a one percent statewide sales tax. Our district is one of a handful of districts out of 518 in Missouri that does not have a Prop C waiver. Therefore, we are required to reduce our property tax rate by one-half of the Prop C revenue received in the prior fiscal year. So this is the data used for this year's calculation and the prior two. The Prop C calculation worksheet is on page 14 of your packet if you're interested, and it shows that this year's rollback is 43.11 cents. So looking at how we calculate the operating tax levy. We take, we divide the total revenue permitted by the adjusted assessed valuation, and then multiply that by 100, in this case resulting in a tax rate ceiling of 3.7614. We then subtract the required Prop C rollback to calculate the adjusted operating levy, which is calculated to be 3.3303. And again, those calculations are on page 11 of your packet. If you wanted to see how the permitted revenue is calculated, and then again, the adjusted assessed valuation. It gets very complicated, so I started to put it on the slides here, and then it was just going all over the place, so. Okay, so then the debt service levy calculation is based upon our total debt obligations for the next two calendar years, the anticipated debt service fund balance, and the total assessed valuation. That calculation's on page 12 of your packet, that's Form C. This year, the calculation allows for a debt service levy of 44.56 cents. However, we are recommending that the board approves continuing the rollback to this levy this year by 14.56 cents for a total debt service levy of 30 cents. We have worked closely with our bond advisors at Stiefel, and this amount of levy is determined that it's what is needed to allow the district to sufficiently service its debt in the coming So here you can see the trends in levies as compared to assessed valuation. It is important to note that in 2015, 16, and 17, the district phased in a voter-approved 25-cent levy increase to fund early childhood education and seventh grade activities. So looking at that same local residence mentioned earlier, we can calculate the tax owed for 2019. The assessed value again was calculated to be $28,500 multiplied by the proposed tax rate of 3.6303, and then divided by 100 for a total tax due of $1,034.64. That amounts to $17.50 for the year over last year. So this slide, I realize, is a bit hard to read, but it's an important one. Assuming no other district changes their tax rate, Rolla will rank 22 on the list of 27 districts in the Camden Town Salary Survey, and of those districts with a debt service levy, ours will continue to be the lowest. I would also like to point out that while we have one of the lowest levies, total levies of these districts, our teacher salaries are close to the top.
Yeah, this is a slide we use often. You look at everything from bus purchases to lunch prices, staffing ratios, and those kinds of things. Those districts below us are in our conference, for the most part, and all are impacted either by assessed value because of tourism like the Lake of the Ozarks, or federal impact aid such as Waynesville. So, very proud of where that is. If you were to put that same chart up there with teacher salaries, as Kendra said, we'd be at 1-2 across all categories of comparison.
Okay. So, may I answer any questions?
I have a question on something that's not covered here. It has to do with the TIF.
Okay.
West, and we are to receive a certain amount of revenue. I know it's not in these calculations, so...
I don't have that with me, but I can...
But it's general revenue, it's operating revenue. Okay, very good.
Yes.
Kendra, on the voluntary rollback, how did you say that is determined?
So, the voluntary rollback, that basically what we do, we actually start with what is necessary to service the debt.
Okay.
For the next several years till the end of the debt is paid off. So we basically start there and determine what the rollback needs to be. So again, we were authorized to levy, what was it, 40...
Well, speak. Early on, the debt service ceiling was 32.9 cents. We, 10 years ago, when we started the voluntary rollback to 25 cents, and the servicing of the debt for bond issues in '05 and '10, we paid one off early, if you recall, saving $200,000 in interest. The schedule gets more aggressive as you work your way through repayment of those 20-year bonds unless you refinance them. So, as that ceiling then continues to go up to, up to 44 cents, it puts a strain on the balance in the debt service levy to try to service at that same amount. We arrived at 25 cents based upon the financial advisor at the time, which was George K. Baum, saying you can service your debt at 25 cents, not levying the ceiling. There are new financial advisors onboard, and the way the economy has changed and how much debt we carry, which isn't very much, as you saw in that slide two, the ability to maintain that same payment rollback, just, so we're still rolling it back, we just can't roll it back as far.
Right.
In order to maintain the payment.
So, what happened since George K. Baum made their calculations was that our growth in our taxable base didn't grow as much as what they had predicted.
Correct.
And so, Stiefel used a lower percentage growth rate, which means that we need to have a higher rate to get the same amount of revenue.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, we had a good growth this year.
We did.
And so that may, in future years, they may recalculate that.
Yeah, very, very...
Certainly, if we had this growth this year, if we didn't, if we still had a debt service levy of 25 cents, within 10 years from now, our debt service fund would still be dangerously depleted.
Okay, thank you.
And, I lost my train of thought, it'll come back. This is an interesting year too, is we have reassessment, we had growth in assessed value, and we had new construction. Typically, one of those lines would be zero. You know, we wouldn't be, I think your question about subtracting the 15 million seems pretty significant. And it is, but it's part of that mechanical calculation that you have to use. So we had a good year. It's not been that way every year, and rolling in the, phasing the levy has helped, so.
Any other questions? I just need approval of this slide.
Ask for any public comments.
Yeah, okay, so that was our presentation. If there are any public comments, you can come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record. Persons wishing to comment will be granted five minutes. Okay. I don't see anyone stepping forward at this time. And, do we have a motion to adopt the 2019 school tax levy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you.
I would add to that, we have our auditors on site at the end of this month from Graves and Associates, so this will be the first audit that you've gone through too. So, some of the things they point out will hopefully be affirmations of the moves that we've made during the course of the year. They'll recognize the debt repayment and all the other things that they'll present to us in November. So they'll be here, Kendra, August 28th, and they stay for a while upstairs and go through our books, and they leave, and then they come back with the final report, which will, again, reconnect us to what we just did and how prudent we are with finances trusted to us, so. Thank you, Kendra.
Okay, we ready to move on? Questions from the floor. At this time, any persons wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda, we granted five minutes to make the presentation to the board. Please come down, state your name for the record. All right, and I move on to presentations on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on agenda items, or on any items on the agenda, will be granted five minutes to make a presentation. Please state your name for the record. A consent agenda, a consent agenda is utilized by the Rolla Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education but require a minimum of a discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education members welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion, let there be light.
Let there be light.
That's right. And it looks like we have items A through J on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion that we approve the items A through J on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Shannon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, new business. There was some leisure reading included in this week's packet. We have board policies.
I would just, as a way of leading into discussion, these are the policies that have gone through the policy committee, which many of us sit on, and would point that Policy 5 DFA 2 for approval relates to Item E under New Business, Reciprocal Deposits Contract. That policy was not recommended from MSBA, but one that we have worked through with the Audit Committee, Mr. Packard and Ms. Clayton, Kendra, to work with Citizens Bank to bring our policy in line. It did not change the parameters of any of the bid we did prior to for deposit purposes. Would also say that there's a, one of these policies, I can't remember which one it is, Greg, you're probably going to know it off the top of your head, the one on the calendar. We'll pass it, and then we'll have a new one, because August 28th, the new law will go into effect, it'll change the school start date. So the one that's in here reflects what we've been doing and what we're doing now, and the one that we'll get here soon will reflect what we need to do next year with the later start date. But I don't remember which letter I see. Important calendar, I see, yeah.
So should we do this one letter at a time?
No, I wouldn't do it one letter at a time.
One letter is A.
Approve the policies as presented. We had made a few alterations for grammatical and spelling.
So we do policies, procedures, and forms, all in one?
Well, the procedures and the forms follow what were recommended in the policies. And we typically, now this is new to you and to everyone, because the policies and procedures were an administrative function that we did as a group, and to eliminate the lag in the, what we get back from the administrators, we just took it on and had the whole committee do both policies and procedures and forms. So, since their administrator's already sitting on the policy committee.
But you need the board to approve policies, procedures, and forms.
Correct.
Okay, do we have a motion? Go ahead.
Not to belabor the point, but Policy DG AP 1 needs to have somebody appointed, authorized, so.
DG, board procedure.
It's on page 82.
This says resend, is that right? Or is that just a different one?
It's be a different one. This says approve as presented, or DFA 2, I'm sorry.
DJFA 2?
D, DFA 2.
Oh, that's the reciprocal deposit.
Just approve with the deposit, so if someone needs to be appointed and, yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming that it's you or who you designate.
And I designate, I would designate Mrs. Atkinson, so, yes, that's fine, we can make that change. Myra will make that specific change to it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the board policies, board procedures, and board forms as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Got some recycling to do here.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have a few more that just came in too, right, Myra?
Okay. Next item, Annual Secretary of the Board Report. Mrs. Atkinson will present the Annual Secretary of the Board Report for approval by the board.
I just wanted Kendra to be back up here because she's in charge of both D and E. D, you've already pretty much approved with the passage of the budget, or the tax rate. The ASBR just fills in the numbers, so that does need formal approval, and she can give further explanation to Item E while she's up there too. So D, we need action on.
Okay, so the Annual Secretary of the Board Report starts on page 253 and goes to 278. So, for those of you that are familiar with that report, you'll notice that it's about eight or 10 pages longer than usual. That is because that it's due to the new coding structure that we put in place beginning of last fiscal year, kind of culminates in this, this same data. Okay, let me start over. Annual Secretary of the Board Report, sorry, Dr. Wallace. It's a culmination and reporting of all of our financial data from last fiscal year. It's reported and due to the Department of Education by August 15th, so that's today. So that was filed about a week ago, and so we're all good there. This report then shows our ending fund balances, where we actually officially ended the year. And you'll notice that we ended the year at 32.3 percent fund balance for operating fund. I would also like to point out on page 253, did end up doing a $1,250,000 transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. That is 750,000 more than we had originally budgeted last year. So the way we ended up in the operating fund, Dr. Wallace and I had a discussion, and knowing that we have some upcoming capital projects ahead of us, I think that would be a good way to reinvest in the district.
We want to make sure that we, money used in that case is for long-term, you know, committing ongoing expenses with one-time transfers like that, so it could be used to offset the impact of a future bond issue by reinvesting in the district's facility plan and offsetting what would be required to accomplish one of those seven items we have out on the survey. The floor in Fund 4 is 3 million, so this gives us some money to put toward that. That's what we've done over the past seven building projects or so. If we're not going to be able to do a zero debt service levy increase, we've maxed that. But we'll know more about that when we talk with our financial advisors in October. That's the plan.
So the same report will, of course, be reviewed by our auditors, again, when they're here, August 28th. It will also be used by Desi for creating our annual report card that'll be available later this school year, and it will basically allow them to break out our expenditures per pupil, per building, all of that that I think you all learned about due to the SF law, Every Students Except Act. With those ending fund balances, actual ending fund balances, I did, I don't have it in your board packet, but I did update the beginning fund balances for fiscal year 20. Our original fund balance percentage budgeted for FY '20 is 22.16 percent. With those updated beginning balances, we're at 22.44 percent. Any questions on the Annual Secretary of the Board Report?
Just to comment that we did end up the year in the black, so.
Yes.
We did not have a deficit in our operating fund.
I was pointing at RD. You got that, so your headline on your next article would be "School Districts Run Efficiently Well."
Are you going to write it for us? It's a direct quote. It's going to fuck us out.
I think he's been in enough meetings that I would, I realize that the fund, ending fund balance at 32 is different than the budgeted 22, but with the time that these things happen, you've heard this kind of as a broken record, we have revenues that are uncertain at a time that we have to make certain decisions about salaries for staff, which is 80 percent of our budget, so we underestimate our revenues and overestimate our expenditures, but we're even carrying more teachers this year and programs, and we're able to add staff. And none of the other metrics that we've used, i.e. teacher salaries in comparison to others, or anything on our strategic plan suffers as a result of that cushion. So, I'm conservative, ultra-conservative, and you can criticize me for that, but I don't know many other ways to do that, so. I wish I was that way at home, I'm not in charge of having that kind of...
You threw Liz under the bus.
No, she's, no, she's the boss. So, anyway, that's, we're, we're pleased, yeah, we're pleased where we are, yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the Annual Secretary of the Board Report.
I'll make the motion to approve the Annual Secretary of the Board Report.
Thanks, Jane.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You're just going to stay there, huh?
I guess I am.
Reciprocal deposits contracts, that's what we were talking about just a minute ago. Mrs. Atkinson will present this contract for the board to approve.
Okay, so that contract is on pages 279 to 294 of your board packet. And again, the Audit Committee and I did get together and meet with Mr. Sandy Hutchinson over at Citizens Bank regarding this contract. We were approached by the bank in early July, asking us to consider entering into this agreement. What this, or the way our funds are currently safeguarded is not through the FDIC, that's limited to $250,000 per depositor. So they, the bank buys securities to safeguard our funds. What that has done is tied up their ability to reinvest in the local community. There's a, a different option out there now that is available and certainly legal, but we did have the policy rewritten to allow us to do this, and that is the reciprocal deposits. So the way that works is essentially $250,000 chunks of our money will be deposited to other banks, and return, those banks will send the same amount of money to Citizens Bank to deposit, and so all of our money in $250,000 increments will then be deposited, or safeguarded and secured through the FDIC. We will notice no difference, we have been guaranteed to experience the same interest rates. The attorneys again looked at the contract, rewrote our policy, they are all so comfortable with us. Mr. Packard, did you have anything else to add for that?
Just that over the course of the last two years, the laws changed both in, at the federal level and at the state to authorize this sort of arrangement, so it's good for the local community. So, our money is still safeguarded and in compliance with the laws, so that's what we are proposing to do.
Any idea on how many different deposits and how many different banks would be involved?
We don't. What we will do, that will kind of depend upon how much we decide to, we won't have all of our money out, I guess I didn't say that. We will leave, I think we decide around 10 to 15 million here, secured here with securities. The rest is what would be deposited out, and of course, that will vary pretty much on a daily basis. It will be a constant flow of in and out with our funds, depending on our balances in the coming year.
Any other questions for Kendra? Anything else to add, Jim?
No. We are modifying our agreement with this arrangement, so I would suggest that the motion, state that so that they know that we're not replacing our agreement, so.
Reasonable, okay.
Okay?
Yes.
I'll make the motion then, since Carla's not here, that we enter into this agreement as presented.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Do you want to come back up for something else? Okay, we like it when you come up.
Stay awhile.
Our MSBA Regional Executive Committee Report. Mrs. Haskell, you've got some information to share with us.
I do, I do. So I represent the advocacy committee on the Regional Executive Committee for MSBA Board. We did, we had a couple conversations in the last weeks and conference calls. Just a couple things that they asked that I bring up to our local boards. One is that they would like, the MSBA would like to know from our board these things, what statement should be included in a board ethics policy. I, we do have a board ethics policy, so that might be something that we could just give them a copy of. I guess they put out a question like this every so often, that this was the input for this, what about ethics? What are the practices that an ethical board should demonstrate? What would provide evidence of an ethical board and administration, and what kind of proof should Desi look at to determine your school board is acting ethical? So, Dr. Wallace, I know you, could you, like, I know that we have...
Well, it's part of our CSEP under governance, it's part of how you're evaluated to receive the governance award, and then there's strategies and tactics under each of those goals. Part of that is being asked too, because I think the, there's a task force, commissioner's task force or state board task force has been regionally discussing with schools, input on other metrics to measure what a good school is, that they're getting into... That they're getting into creative ways to compensate teachers and attract and retain teachers to the profession, kind of like Grow Your Own programs. And then other factors, financial stability and governance, that would give you credit points on what we have typically known as M S I P. For our accreditation, M S I P five is what we've been in. You know, they've been having open discussion about what M S I P six will look like. So I can give you specifics to answer that, but it's, what, what we would like to think is the C S I P is part of what we, how we operate. And so we don't have to call it out as we just accomplish decks and check it off. Part of how you deliberate is.
And I do know that whenever, like, we have often given new board members things about being ethical. You know, what it means, what it just look like and all that kind of things. I'm assuming we still do a lot of that too. Another thing is, they did talk about, you know, the start date next year. They, it says that the earliest we could start would be the eighteenth and the latest the twenty-fourth. So however, at the delegate assembly, which Jim and I'm sure Charlotte will be attending, they do have it on one of their propositions to bring that again before the state, the state legislature so that, to try to get local control back. So that's one of the things they are going to be discussing, that delegate meeting.
Yeah, it's interesting, because sixty-one school districts are now at a four-day week. It was thirty-three last year. So some, one of the largest schools that's four-day week is Warrington, thirty-one hundred kids. So it'd be interesting to see what happens with.
Another thing, that for the spring meeting, they wanted some input. Because of some different things with dates, they were looking at March thirtieth and they wondered what our board thought about that. That is the Monday after a lot of people's spring break. They didn't know if that'd be an issue or not an issue, so.
That is, that's not our spring break week. You said it's after, right?
That's right, it would be the Monday after, but.
Our spring break.
After ours, right. So they, they just didn't know if they would, that attendance would be as well as if they, if it were in April. I don't know, I don't know why it would affect, I don't think it'd affect us, but.
I don't think it would affect us as much.
I think they were just asking any of, any of the boards about that within the Region Twelve. And then just with, again, back to Jim and Charlotte, they're going to go to the delegate meeting. One thing that there really is going to be, I think, some discussion about is the medical marijuana. Because what they're going to have to do federally and statewide, determine if that can be legally given at school. And so that's going to be a big discussion. They don't think that it will enter probably this year, but they think it will probably be a big thing for next year. So they said that you all would probably hear a lot about that at the delegate assembly. And I think it's going to be a big topic of discussion.
There was some discussion about that at the meet, the spring meeting.
And then the last thing is that now board members, they want every year for us to get at least an hour and a half of, of added, what do I want to say, added, what? Training, right, added training. So this year it's on, I believe, sexual.
Harassment?
And to be.
Misconduct.
Misconduct, that's it.
Right, and also I guess it's a, like, what they have, they have one, but then Dr. Alice and I were talking that we could probably get something for us to all have, to just watch whenever.
So I had Dr. Dare speaking of that, we were talking about that, so he has some.
I think they said for us to stay in our status, that we need to have that extra hour and a half.
Right, we did check and, and I think, and I'll double check, but I think it is just an hour. I think was the final language. However, there's a clause in that that says that that training has to be either provided by a statewide organization that services school boards.
Such as?
Oh, brothers, such as M S B A.
Such as M S B A.
For the low prime.
Or it has to be approved by the State Board of Education. So we've reached out to, Music provides our, our sexual assault training and harassment training for our staff. We think there would be value in you guys having that same training.
Exactly.
So I reached out to the Music Directors and asked if they would consider approaching the State Board to get that approved.
Good.
But we'll, we'll, we'll keep working on that for you.
Do we have a timeline? Like, when do we have to do that by?
It just says they're going to require school board members to repeat initial training. Oh, no, that's another one. That's another one that they were talking about doing. But this isn't, no, I don't, I, it almost sounds like yearly, but I don't know.
It's annual.
When it is.
I don't know the exact time.
Uh, uh, the way, the way they're interpreting that right now is before the April election.
Okay.
The way they're, but there's nothing that specifies that. That's just an interpretation.
And, and, and all this I think is still going to be discussed and it's going to be something again at the delegate assembly. But of course, they have a, a program, you know, one that they could do there, but, yeah.
Well, yeah, can we do it at the annual meeting?
Well, but it's, it's like three and a half hours and it charges seventy-five dollars per person.
Oh, they're doing a separate.
We think that hopefully in our district, we could still do something like what our, our staff does. And I can remember doing that when I taught here, where you had to do, had to do the online and pass it. You know, after, is this what you see, is this type of things in order to, you know, that was a requirement. So that'll be something that we'll probably have to end up doing. And this year it just happens to be on that. Every year will be a different topic.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, that's it.
It's a way to get five hundred and seventy-five dollars out of a school board.
Exactly.
For more training.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll want to hear, Dr. Dare, hopefully we're back that we can do that. And then, just like our staff does, we can do it on our own computers and log in, get that done. Thank you.
Board of Education Future Issues, those are our fall board meeting dates. We did talk about the October third date being our retreat. Were you able to confirm if Lorenzo or.
Yeah, we have Lorenzo Boyd and Dennis Lee from Stiefel planning to attend. I told them, I told them, I gave them two days, September nineteenth, October third. But then we had a discussion at the agenda setting meeting that October third would seem to be a better date. And Dr. Creed, I hope that's okay.
Yeah, no, that'd be fine.
Now, the other thing that I, I would like to ask of you is, we've done a couple of things, we've done, we did two last year. We started in the afternoon earlier, adjourned down here for regular meeting, what we needed to get done, went back upstairs and finished. We started three-ish, two-ish, convened here, went back up and stopped at eight. And then one year we came back on Friday morning till about eleven, eight to eleven, and finished. The second time we did it, we didn't do anything on Friday morning. So we can prepare an outline and have people here. We'll have, the plan would be to have numbers for, budgetary numbers for the building projects that are proposed in all seven of those questions. Stiefel will be prepared to talk about, now that we've abbreviated our finances, about servicing debt and bond issues and possibility of a Prop C waiver. Dr. Creed asked about, why is this district one of, I think only eight schools and districts in the state of Missouri that has a prop, doesn't have props, has a Prop C waiver? It's just, we've kept that as an option. Last time it was one that was very similar in numbers, the, the amount of revenue produced, but the fees were a little higher, the cost of the, would have been higher, so we just said, we'll keep that. This district did a Prop C voter, voter issue in the late nineties, failed to buy eight votes. So we haven't done anything since. So that, that, they'll have a calculation for us as a consideration. It still is a tax increase, the Prop C waiver does. Just like a zero debt service raises taxes too, it just doesn't change the debt service levy, you're just extending the tax out. So we wouldn't, wouldn't want to say anything to the community that would be false. So be some options to talk about, but just kind of want to know time parameters, when to have them here. We weren't planning to have our architects here. Dr. Dare will, has met with them, so.
Could, could we do it all in one day? I would, I would prefer that. I don't know if everyone else is okay with that.
I think we did that last.
I think, yeah. It was like two or three and we, I don't remember how late it was.
Two or three in the afternoon and then we came down for the meeting. We did go back up and it seemed like we were all in consensus by the time that evening was over. So we, I think we left it open that we needed to come back the next morning, those that could.
Well, Jim was, Jim was going to make breakfast on Friday morning.
That's right, I remember that discussion.
Not last year. Well, the second one we didn't, but we had one September, we had one September, one in January. So Jim can still make breakfast.
But I think that's, that's right, that's how we did last year.
So if, considering that, maybe the two o'clock start time would be better?
That'd be great. Great for me, on the third.
On October third.
Two to eight, seven, eight, till we finish?
Let's say till eight, yeah.
If we get done early, it's fine, but let's say till eight. I, I think we'll have a lot to, you know, to get through.
And it will be good to have Stiefel here.
Stiefel. Stiefel won't be stifled.
Stiefel. I'll probably say wrong right now.
That's right.
Embarrass, embarrass all of us.
When we were talking, I think this was after we'd approved the, the tenure plan, we had talked about going to visit possibly a gym that has been converted into an auditorium to see it. And I mean, we had a great visual on the survey, but it would, I, I think there are others maybe not too far away to go see. And maybe it, I don't know if it's possible to get that done before the third. Maybe those who could go in an evening or an afternoon, I don't know what works best.
We did two, we did a field trip before we did the early childhood. We took a trip to both Branson and Nixa in one day to see a standalone facility and then see how one was integrated in the regular schools and talk to the people. So I think Dr. Dare could probably arrange to.
Yeah, we can make that arrangement.
Get some dates out to you and to Mark and that could be great.
I know we saw some pictures, I think it was last fall, when we were in the, oh, the little area where all the different architects.
Exhibit area.
Yes, exhibit.
Lauren, we could probably get you out of school to go if you wanted to go.
I think it's a must.
She's going to think about it.
Yeah.
Didn't even.
All right. She didn't, she didn't even hesitate.
You don't have to be so hesitant, I mean, it's okay.
Might have an article due for focus.
That's right.
You could actually do R D's work for him on the field trip.
He likes that.
Or you could go.
Okay, anything else on those? Is there anything else we need to talk about as far as what items to discuss? You've got a pretty good list of things there, right?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. With our communication plan, Mrs. Zervas will present information on the new district website and the app, and something about peaches.
Peach tree?
Peach jar.
Yeah, so you all will get to witness my multitasking skills at their finest this evening as I hold the mic and the mouse. So thank you for having me in. I know we've discussed the website at a bit. We've discussed the website a bit and another ten days out from our last conversation at the administrative meeting. And I'm happy to say that we've, I think, come a long way even since then in improving the content and function. So first of all, thank you to all of you for listening to the community, listening to what they want and what they need and seeing our vision for a more modern communication tool. This website and custom app have really checked a lot of boxes on both the communications plan and the technology plan. So it was definitely a group effort. Thank you so much to Ginger King and her crew in technology. I'm, I'm really proud of the outcome, proud of what we created here, so. A little context for the folks at home. In March of twenty nineteen, you, the board, approved the purchase of a new district content management system and custom mobile app. We worked all summer with our project manager at School Messenger West. And again, I'm excited to share with you the final product. It really has kind of been like Christmas, so I'm trying to contain myself. So as you can see, this is our brand-new website. I am, again, pleased with the design. One thing I want to point out to all of you and our folks at home, ralla31.org is our new URL. So we've gotten a few messages from community members who maybe had the old website bookmarked. If you have the old website bookmarked, the Ralla K twelve, I encourage you to update that because on occasion we're still getting certificate errors. We are working to resolve that with MorNet and our providers at School Messenger West. But just know that in the meantime, it is a secure site, there's nothing wrong with it. If you do get that from a bookmark that you had previously saved, just type in the URL in the bar, ralla31.org. So we took a lot of time in the beginning and I think front-loading some of this information saved us a lot of painstaking editing on the backend. And we went through the old website and figured out first and foremost, what were people looking for when they visited? So we ran a whole lot of reports and we asked a whole lot of people, why do you visit our current website? And the, the answers that we got most commonly were exactly what you would expect. They were looking for lunch menus, calendars, staff directories, all of the things that go into the day-to-day function of just going to school. And so taking that information and, and using that in the design process, we really tried to place most of the most-wanted material front and center. So I love these quick link buttons here across the bottom and they turn a beautiful maroon when you roll across them. Our principal calendar is right there, a link to the lunch menu is right there. This takes you to our athletic site and so on. So again, all of those most-wanted items are right up front. Another piece of the design that we wanted to integrate was the scrolling calendar. If you're on your phone, it's actually really cool, you can just swipe to the side. But you can do that with these little arrows here as well. And you can scroll as far ahead as you want. If you want to see the whole thing, you just click right here. And of course, this one being the district page, all of the, the other buildings are funneled into this calendar. If you're on a specific building page, you will just see their calendar. We wanted the calendar to be highly functional, so in addition to being pretty and being accessible, within those calendar event entries, there's also an option to add registration links. So for example, if it's a sports camp where the students have to register and pay, we can embed those right in the event, in, in the event entry on the calendar. Flyers, images, person to contact, we can invite participants right there in those pages. So again, really highly functioning calendar content and also again, user-friendly. We can also embed Google Map portlets. So for some of our other events being competitions, that kind of thing, the Google Map portlet will be right there and it will deep-link to your Google Maps on your phone. At the bottom you have recent news stories, so we can put some of our more important things and current events right here. Keep those front and center. And then of course, here is our survey, a link to the survey right here at the bottom. So if you've not participated in the survey, please do that. It's right there on the ralla31.org homepage. And then another feature that I would point out here is that we have the ability to do desktop notifications here. So for example, if we have a snow day, it's hard to think about that in August, but when we have a snow day, we, a little box will pop up when you go to ralla31.org and you'll have to click okay to get past the message and proceed to the website. So it will say, no school today for January first, whatever. And, and that's, that will also be a great way to help us push those notifications out. Parents can just go straight to the website if they feel like they missed a call or a text. One other thing, I know we wanted to talk about Peach Jar. There's a little button that looks like a peach on every building website. It's right over here on the right-hand side and it will be in the same place on your mobile, on your mobile view. If you click on it, it will show you all the flyers that have been uploaded to that school's Peach Jar account for the week. So this week, when you click on it, you get the Tinker Garden flyer. And each parent that's subscribed to those notifications, no matter what building, will get an email every week with the flyers for the week. So of little thumbnails, you can click on them and again, same sort of thing, they can embed registration links. So no more paper. We are housing all of our flyers from outside organizations there on the Peach Jar button. Feel free to stop me if you guys have any questions.
Gina?
Yes.
On that, you said just outside notifications, so like, what about your P T Os?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that, that is one hundred percent included, so. Yes, we can also. Yes, we can also upload our internal flyers, um, but the outside organizations would go through that peach jar process as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, abso- great question, thank you. Okay, so moving on. Maybe? So, I wanted to point out a few more things in terms of responsive design, and this is another piece that was really important to us when we were figuring out how to, uh, best create the website. In the past, we had a website that was not at all responsive to mobile devices because it was built before anyone had a mobile device in their pocket. Um, this one is 100%, the bag phone. This one is 100% mobile responsive and I, I screenshotted a few examples here. Of course, the top left is your desktop view. Um, the one on the bottom left, this is more like an iPad, and then here's your mobile phone. And, and we have the ability, as we're adding content, to preview what it looks like in all of these, uh, screen sizes. Um, so again, the, the backend of this is highly user-friendly and we've gotten a great response from our staff that's been training on it so far. Where the yellow circles are, if you have visited the site on your mobile phone, the only piece that, that you may feel like is missing is how do I pick a school? So, I wanted to point that out to you. If you're on your mobile phone, there's this little cog at the top. If you click that, it will give you a tiny dropdown and you can select a school right there at the top, but it is hidden unless you know to click the cog, cog. Um, those are also, um, easy to find if you hit the menu bar, but that's a quick, quick way to access that, so just wanted to point that out. We also have a brand-new custom app, and again, I'm really pleased with the way this has turned out. If you've not yet downloaded it, please go to your Google Play Store or your Apple App Store. Uh, just search Ralla Public Schools and you'll come up with our Bulldog Head, and it is a very quick and easy download. Um, it just really only takes a few seconds.
We were on the morning mayors, when was that?
Last Friday.
Yeah, and, and Lee, uh, had, Kent did it for Lee on his phone because he couldn't find the Apple.
The App Store.
He couldn't find the App Store because he deleted it from his phone, but Kent did it on air while, while Gina was talking, so.
That's neat.
Yeah, it, it was about a minute it took him to download it and, and he was up and running while we were live on the air, so that's pretty exciting to feel like it's that easy and that, um, truly anyone can do it. So, uh, this is just a scre- these are screenshots of what the, uh, app looks like. This one is the first page. It is a two-page, uh, content display, so make sure you swipe to the side if you're feeling like something's missing. Um, when you first download it, you'll be prompted to, um, complete a, a settings setup. Uh, if you choose to skip that, you can always go back and do it anytime you like, but it looks something like this. And in the settings, the only thing they're gonna ask you is to select your school. You cannot toggle the district off, so you're stuck with us. You have to get the notifications from the district on the app, um, but you can go through and pick. So, for example, if you have a child at Truman and the middle school, you can just turn those schools on. If you want to know everything that's going on at all the schools in the district, like me, you just turn them all on and all of your, um, any messages that go out from those central hubs are gonna, um, show up as notifications in the app. You do have the option, of course, to turn off banner notifications, so if you don't want your phone to ding when you get a notification on this app, you can turn that off. Um, otherwise, you can just open the app and visit your notification center as we saw in the previous slide right there. So, again, this app is for everyone, not just parents and students, so any community member that wants to follow, um, sports functions, band competitions, um, performing arts, it's all going to be right there and very user-friendly. You can see the calendar, again, is very accessible and very easy, so this is what the calendar looks like on the app. And then, we also have deep links within the app to all of our social media pages, and, and there's my favorite peach right there at the bottom. So, when you click on that, it will take you to our peach jar landing page on Ralla 31 and you can select your school from there. Um, the deep link means that if you have Facebook app on your phone, uh, this app will direct your, um, traffic to the Facebook app and open our, uh, Ralla 31 Facebook page in your Facebook app, so. Again, very user-friendly. So, we, again, we wanted to make that most, most sought-out content, front and center, lunch menus, calendar, transportation, um, and that's why we chose to put those on the homepage, so. Any questions about the website?
Gina, on the app, you talked about there'll be updates, band competition, sports, that sort of thing. What's the flow chart of that basically? Like, who's allowed to put a notification on the app that gets out?
So, those will come from your adminis- your site administrators at each building. So, if we go back, um, you can see, for example, if you wanted to know about, um, football game rainouts, you would turn on Ralla Athletics, and our site administrators in the athletic office, um, Cabbie, Lori Dunn, Katie Saipaw, they would be the ones pushing out those notifications.
Gotcha.
And, um, it would just be a quick little blurb that would pop on your phone and say, hey, the Kickapoo game has been rained out or, or whatever.
So, it's mainly just the, the principals and the department heads and their assistants?
Correct, yeah. We have assigned uploaders and, and content managers at each building. Yeah, great question. Anything else?
Looks great.
Thank you.
It's really great.
It works great, it functions great.
Yes, it does.
Like, lots of positives in that.
You know, as we go, of course, there, there have been a few things that needed to be fixed and a few, uh, items that were missing, so we just asked that everyone be patient. We're working on continuing to add that content and, and, um, always open to suggestions. So, there is a contact us button on the Ralla 31. Um, you can click that, it will email me, and, uh, you can give us your suggestions there.
Ralla31.org.
Dot org, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been great work, Gina, thank you very much, and thank you to Ginger too. It was a goal set and a goal accomplished, so.
Yes.
Nicely done.
I'm not sure what you're gonna do in all your free time, but you know. Yeah. Okay, board member, school adoption. This is something we did a couple of years ago.
I think you skipped.
Did I skip something?
Yes, you did.
Oh, I guess that, I was just excited about adopting a school. Okay, long-range facility.
Take a step back.
Program update.
On the enthusiasm meter.
Sorry, Dr. Dare, Dr. Salas will discuss planning updates.
You should be just as excited as-
I am.
Well, I mean, hearing and- Switch them around if you wanted and-
No, that's okay. We'll stay in order. She was A, now you're B. I'll be C.
Uh, we wanted to kind of show the results of the surveys thus far. We've, uh, won't read all these to you, but this is left from the Patron Insight survey that we, a year ago, that looked at the hot-button issues for the community, as denoted by those things that are asterisked and the grades given to those issues, uh, by the members of, patrons of our community as to, uh, what was important to them. So, uh, obviously, you see quality of school facilities there, ranks at the top, and the performance of the teachers is things that we've, of course, we have a tenure facility and program plan, so, uh, that's the impetus for this. Okay, Meyer. So, the questions, uh, that we've talked about rank here, we've talked about the tenure plan and talked about the community input. Uh, Mr. Packard served on that and, uh, Mr. Henshaw, former, and Mrs. Jameson, former assistant super- chaired by former assistant superintendent Kelly Henshaw, and Mark Ruth, our district architect, spent the year going through our facilities, uh, produced a tenure plan, gave monthly updates to the board and for the community. And from that, at our retreats last year, uh, the first one, uh, took a look at, at the plan, and then by the second one in January, retreat we had, we narrowed, uh, those items down to seven to get started on, on that tenure plan. And then, early or late last year, um, in the spring, we launched a survey to internal staff and then launched it out to external staff. Our plan is to do one more push, but we have had near, uh, as of last week, 955, 58 responses. I would, not all people responded to every question, and not all people gave comments, so there's like 123 comments of, uh, given for the 958 responses, and some of the comments do not relate to the actual seven questions, which, uh, which is fine, um, but we're trying to really hear what people are saying. So, as Gina pointed out on this, on the district website, you can go to the homepage and the survey, still links at the bottom, but, uh, these are the seven items then, uh, pushed out to questions. I'll let Dr. Dare talk a little bit about, more about this safety one, just as we did with staff last week.
Just, and, and you all have heard this before, but I, I did share with the staff, you know, there's a, there were a few people that disagreed that safety was important, and I really think that was probably our grandmothers who want full access to the school with no restrictions. Uh, I think that has to be where that's coming from, but, uh, uh, all in all, obviously, most, the vast majority of people agree that that's important, and we did share with the teachers, uh, and, and some of the other staff that, you know, we are taking some steps forward in that direction with the alerta system and, and those types of things. And we are also, uh, as Dr. Salas mentioned for the retreat, we'll have, um, some numbers to go with this piece also. Just some beginning things, talking about some entryways, um, expansion of the alerta system, some door upgrades, some basic things like that, just to get some idea of what those costs would be.
All right, next question. I'm not gonna read all these to you. Uh, 2A is just a standalone gymnasium, excuse me.
Auditorium.
Auditorium, uh, at the high school. Uh, the high, the auditorium is a leftover from the previous tenure facility plan. It was actually on the question, uh, that we discussed with the community, uh, until we got to the extra voter poll on support, and they liked the idea, but the tax tolerance wasn't there, so we pulled it off and it's back here, and, and here's the response for that, just a standalone, uh, facility. And then, 2B, this next question takes the gymnasium and converts it to an auditorium and builds a new multipurpose field house, so part of your tour that you just, uh, committed to doing with Dr. Dare and i- is to go see the conversion of a, uh, a gymnasium. Now, ar- architects have done a few of them and some more, uh, finished than others, meaning that you can't ever tell it's a gym and some that you, they left the gym floor. Matter of fact, I was watching Washington's, something that Washington School District did, and their, uh, one of their auditoriums, they had more than one, and you could still see the gym floor, and they, but they wanted it on purpose, so there's any variation. Ours doesn't have that in its, uh, video that's on that question, but you see how that question is ranked out, okay? New band area, you know, at the junior high school, can, re-converting the, uh, current band area to a multipurpose PE. And we have drawings for all these that we'll have for you and cost estimates at the, at the retreat, okay? All the questions are receiving favor. That, that's, the difficult part is going to be how to narrow them down. Expansion of pre-K. And the library for Truman, which includes, uh, you know, kind of a new entryway and, and, um, similar to what we did at Mark Twain, and Wyman's got a new library too, uh, but this, this has to do with security as well, and RTI. Your renovation of spaces there. So, all in all, we've received good feedback in terms of the numbers. We'd like to get another push and hopefully, uh, push that feedback out further. Uh, we'll have a meeting with, uh, Rick Nobles from Excellence K-12, formerly Patron Insight. He'll be here the 21st of August. He has this survey and he has this information so far. He knows, because they did the last attitudinal survey for the school district of, of voter, uh, registered voters, through phone survey, so he's, uh, he'll be here ready to help us. I don't know that he needs to be at our retreat, but he said he'd be willing to, um, because we'll have, according to the timeline, go ahead Meyer, we'll have to make some decisions, uh, you know, moving into the winter, uh, by the January board meeting if we're going to do something in April, so we'll have to have survey work done before that. And it takes a few weeks for them to get their caller data in from registered voters, and so we got a lot to do, um, but it's all positioned and ready to go. It's just a matter of making, making some decisions. So, anybody watching or anybody that you interact with, uh, please make sure that they fill out the survey. We want to, want their input on the ideas that we have for them. And again, we can always do nothing, but, uh, we're just looking for ways to move forward. So, uh, the way that our community finds out information, uh, this is again from our last attitudinal survey, uh, the teachers and the staff, and most of them are friends and neighbors of somebody. It's very important. Uh, you see the district website and the app, uh, being a major source of information. I suspect that will climb because of its effectiveness, uh, as it was before, being a website that was out there before cell phones, according to Mrs. Zervas. Um, now, we're really gonna be, uh, hopefully, taking advantage of that. Okay. Okay, Meyer. And that, that's, uh, happy to answer any questions. Uh, we're, that's where we're at relative to.
Any questions or?
It's the comment that, you know, you're gonna meet next week with, uh, Nick Nobles. I would suggest a discussion about how to move quickly after our October meeting. So, he needs to be ready to-
We would have to have some results by the, there's only one meeting November 1 and December.
Yeah, but he, he's gonna need time to, he'll want to get the surveys done probably before Thanksgiving, and then he'll have to have time to get the report together.
Yep.
Are you done?
I am.
Just checking before I move on, you know?
I'm done, when you tell me, I'm, when you tell me, I'm done.
Did you have anything to add?
I'm finished.
Just checking, okay. Board member, school adoption. Uh, so, I think I've talked to most of you, maybe, I, I haven't talked to Tony today, he's the only one. Um, but I, we just started this a couple of years ago. There's seven buildings, seven board members, um, so we each have one to adopt. It's just that you're a person to go in and encourage and see and be a part of activities that they might have. The principals, since this is our third year doing this, most of them will know what to let you know, you know, what events to invite you to, um, and, uh, you know, if you're already involved in the building, that's great, um, but-
I've got my app now, I'll get notification.
There you go, that's a great, uh, great plug for you, right Gina? Uh, so, uh, let's see, Shannon, I've got you at the middle school.
Sounds great.
Uh, Brian, I've got you at the high school, but that might be, you're involved with a lot of things there.
Work out a lot better.
Carlo will be at Truman, uh, Jane, I've got you at Wyman, uh, Tony, I asked him, I will ask him, I haven't talked to him yet, to be at RTI, RTC. Jim will be at the junior high, and I'm gonna go back to Mark Twain, that's where my kids went to school, so that'll be exciting. Uh, just kind of along the lines of retreat and board stuff. I know the last couple of years, we've done a book study, um, with as much as we have kind of on our plate for this year. Um, you know, if, if we decide not to do something, construction-wise, we could always add a book study in the spring, but, uh, for now, let's maybe kind of table that. If anybody has any other opinions, I'm hoping to hear what you think.
Well, you know, from our last book study on engagement, I feel that's, we've continued that. That, that's been a whole message throughout our whole board, and, and I think we talked last year, we didn't add another book, is that we wanted to take some of the stuff that we'd learned from that, and I think we're doing that with the surveys and with looking at, you know, the website, just looking at ways to get it, it into the schools more. So, I think you're right, I think we have a lot, a lot going on, but I think it's gonna take a lot of our time to just-
I mean, we practically had a book study today, right, with our, um-
Policies.
Our policies, right?
Exactly.
But, uh, anyway, uh-
You got any more as you have come in?
When's the next policy meeting? Any idea what day? Mondays and Tuesdays are bad. But that's just for me, I don't want to reschedule everybody, so.
Okay, any other discussion about the school adoption? Um, is that something that you communicate out to the principals, or do we need to make contact? Thank you.
Myra usually does that.
Okay.
If you're Myra, let the principals know what we remember from inside.
I, I've, I've done it. If you want her to do it, she can do it.
No, I mean, whatever you've done historically is great.
Might be more fun just to show up.
Or trade places.
Guess what?
Hang on here.
Okay.
Trade places, they'll say, is it? Doctor, is it supposed to be here? No, I'm here.
Okay, we'll move on to our, um, our new focus intern slash school board. Okay, we'll move on to our, um, our new focus intern slash school board student member. Lauren is welcome to comment on events in the school district. What's going on?
Hi, everyone, um, so school started, that's a big thing. So school started Tuesday and it's actually been going really great so far. But a lot of work went into school before it even started. So we had our orientations with our link crew at the high school, welcoming our freshmen. The teachers had workdays beforehand and I went into school beforehand and I saw a lot of people, a lot of students there working on things for clubs and activities. DUCO members were decorating the school. So even before school started, our students were already engaged, so I thought that was exciting. So with school starting, all of our activities are already happening. The sports teams had camps over the summer, band camp went on two weeks before school started. And so you can look forward to girls golf, football, boys soccer, girls tennis, volleyball, softball, and band is all happening right now. I'm not going to go through every single date for sports, but you can find those on the website. Okay, um, this Saturday, the 17th FFA is taking their trip to the state fair. So that's exciting. One thing to look forward to, the softball jamboree is going to be at home on the 23rd. Also, on the 23rd is the varsity football jamboree. And I don't know exactly what this is going to entail, but we are having a back-to-school street dance after the varsity football jamboree from 9:00 to 11:30 PM. So if any of you want to go to street dance, I don't know, it could be fun.
Wait, did you say street dance?
Street dance in the staff parking lot.
Street.
Street dance, yes. So I have no idea what that really means, but we'll, we'll see, it'll be fun. Um, and then on the 26th, the high school is hap-, the high school volleyball team is having their jamboree. Also, the biggest thing on your agenda to look forward to is Bulldog Pride Night. That's going to be on the 30th. Of course, the varsity football team will be playing and they're going to be playing Glendale. But before that, you can go at 5:30 and there will be free hot dogs, sodas, giveaways and booths from different organizations within the community for Bulldog Pride Night. Also, one thing to think about, we have a huge number of clubs at the high school and those are all starting up within the next couple of weeks. So even though clubs don't necessarily always get the headlines or they aren't always put on the calendar like sports are, but definitely remember that all of our students are probably engaged in a club or two as well. So that's all I have. Oh, also, one thing to note, whenever I come up with these updates, I always go to the school's website and it was very easy this time because I had a calendar with all of our, all of our events on it. So thank you for that too, Gina.
And tell us about your internship.
Okay, so I have an internship, it's called the Sowers Intern, internship with the Phelps County Focus. Maya Bond had it last year, she was their first intern. The Phelps County Focus has only been operating for a few years, so Maya was their first intern and I'll be their second. So basically, I will be writing an article every week, I'll have a column, and I will write things relating to school and the, any activities going on within the district. So I already do that within Echo and our school's publications, but now I'll be expanding that within the Phelps County Focus as well.
That's wonderful.
Oh, congratulations, that's really cool. Bulldog Pride Night, will the band be performing that night also?
I believe so. They probably won't have the full show, but I would expect half of it.
And do you start competitions in October or you have one in September?
I, I don't remember the exact date, but it's early this year, it's earlier than normal.
Is it in, is it in Sullivan, is that the first one?
Yeah, yeah, it's a week or two earlier than normal, so.
Very good. Well, thank you, we've missed you over the summer, we're glad to have you back.
You too.
And all of our students back. There are some written reports including, included in the back of your packet and there's a, the dates to remember, this is just our board meetings, but also coming up at the end of September is MSBA. Do you have, uh, do you already have us registered for that or, okay? Okay. Great, end of September.
Great.
Ms. Jameson, if I could for just a second? We have Brad Gibbs and Phil Horn with us in the back with the RALA Police Department. They're currently serving as our SROs and I want to thank them and all the other officers from the community that helped us with these first couple of days. Traffic is fun at the elementaries especially.
You got it all fixed and it's running smoothly now, right?
Appreciate them very much.
Thank you for being here and thank you for what you do for our students, appreciate it.
Yeah, we've, we just finished as this, as we have this meeting, day three, so we say a successful first day is getting them here, getting them fed and getting them home, which we've done and in your written reports, you'll see the transportation reports on the, from the highway patrol bus inspection and it's 96.9% with 65 buses. So appreciation to them and Beth with food service. Everybody's gotten fed and we haven't lost anybody, we.
We generally don't, right?
I think, uh, I think oftentimes we underestimate the enormity of getting schools started and what it takes from those people who, uh, don't, we don't see every day. You know, Lauren pointed out the kids that are here early, but many of them never left in preparation for a, a great start. So we very much appreciate all of our support staff.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Jane.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It was the one that was here.